You're gonna be giving an indication.
Are you asked?
Yes, yes.
Of course I will.
Alright, good evening. It is six oh five. Uh, I call this, uh, meeting of Scott County Border Health to order. Um, and we will have our invocation by, uh, Commissioner Gibson.
Would you bow your heads? How grateful we are for your kindness and your mercy towards us. In that you allow us even this opportunity to serve the citizens of this community. We seek now your guidance, your understanding, and your direction. As we shall discuss matters of public health and that you will help us to make the right decisions as you have done throughout the entirety of this day. We ask your blessings upon our health department and all of those who serve our community. And we give you thanks again for the opportunity that you give for us to serve. What is in your prayer? Amen.
Amen. Alright, any discussion about the agenda? We had new, uh, revised agendas that were set out before you. They're different from what we had mailed out. Any changes to the agenda?
Madam Chair, I'll offer a motion to adopt the agenda.
Alright, any se- a second? Second, alright, moved in second, agenda's adopted. Where everybody should have received the, uh, February minutes in your packets at home. They also should be here for your review. You hadn't, anybody have any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, can I get a motion to adopt our minutes? I am motion.
Second.
Second. We have approval of our February minutes. Uh, we will now, uh, open up for if we have anyone in our public forum. Alright, that we have none, we will continue on. We will have our, uh, update, um, and preliminary budget.
Good evening. I have several things tonight, but I'll try to be as quick as possible. Uh, the first thing, the slides, um, the financial update as of March thirty first, two thousand and four. So this, we are through three quarters of the fiscal year, so that means you should be at seventy-five percent. Um, as you can see, as the total of the health department, we are at sixty-five percent, sixty-five point eight percent as far as expenditures, so we are currently about ten percent under budget. Any questions on any of that? The only thing that is above is the immunizations, which I told last time we met that would come down as soon as I was able to pull the money from the revenues that we got extra. Um, plus additional costs of, if anyone knows anything about private immunizations, every quarter, the prices raise. Um, and so, and we have also bought a lot of rabies vaccine this year. I cannot tell you the amount of rabies vaccine that we have bought this year. So that is, was not budgeted in either. Questions?
So we, we've had to use all those rabies vaccines.
Yes. Any questions on expenditures? Okay, um, on revenues, once again, seventy-five percent. Um, should, currently at sixty-five point four percent, so we're about ten percent unbudgeted as far as collections go. Um, so, we're doing a little bit better than just than I have in previous years. Previous years, it's been a little slower coming in, but, um, I think we've made some changes. Um, billing wise, and I think things are coming in a little bit faster, so. And I actu- we actually have some staff that's been here longer than a year. So it's not so much turnover in my billing, in the billing department, so not having to train so much. So, any questions? Okay. So.
Well, one question.
Yes, ma'am.
So we're back to like being on time. You know how we were behind for a while, because we were behind in staff. We're doing our billing. Are we still like, you know, the typical month, because we know?
I have a med- our medical biller currently is billing today what was done yesterday.
That's very good.
So there is no week, two week, oh, three week, no, she is, every morning she grabs the encounter forms and she bills them that day. Sometimes she goes up at lunchtime and gets them at lunchtime and bills them the same day. So, um, been very fortunate to have an employee who's been able to be trained very well and to do that, so. Hope we never go through that again. Um, so the other, um, once I go to the fee schedule, um, I know last year, we kind of went backwards and the fee schedule was approved before y'all actually approved it. And I apologize, because that was my error. Um, so this year, I want to make sure we get through this whole thing altogether, okay? So the very first paper I gave you, I think, looks like this. Um, it is actually the general statute, and I like to let the Board of Health know that this, you know, this general statute tells you what your privileges and powers are as a local Board of Health. Um, and if you look down there at, can y'all, y'all have it? Y'all had that paper? Okay, I'm sorry. I thought it was in the packet. I apologize. Anyway, but, um, I can let you look at it if you like, but, um. So that is what it says, that you have the authority to set fees where applicable. Now, you cannot supersede anything from the state or the health as far as setting fees, and then you got it?
It's also on.
It's also with here? Okay, I could, I did give you that, she, okay, alright, thank you. So you do have the authority to do so. Um, also, if you look down and on the other one, it'd say E, which would tell you how the fees are set. Those are the two pieces of paper, accreditation benchmark, and that says thirty-three point five and thirty-nine point three. Um, this is our accreditation that says that we have to have a policy in place and the Board of Health has to approve. Everybody okay with that? Make sure everybody had the background on how it worked, because there are some folks that, um, have some new members as well. Um, so, the fee schedule, which is going to look like this, I'm sorry. Um, uh, we, as a committee, met, the committee consists of, um, myself, um, our accounts payable insurance, um, lab staff, our lab manager, our DON, our public health, nursing supervisor, um, our environmental health supervisor, and also Jenna, which is our accreditation coordinator, that I leave somebody, Amanda, sorry, let Amanda out. And Christine is there, because we have to have minutes for that meeting as well, so we have to have it recorded. So, as you can see in that thing, anything in blue was the only thing that was changed. Um, so if you could see anything in blue, the only thing that was changed once again as last previous year was the actual vaccines. The private vaccine and the cost that went up. Anybody have any questions on the fee schedule? For FY twenty-five? Now, once this is approved by the board, it will go to Beth and to April and to the commissioners, and the commissioners will approve this as part of their budget and their fee schedule for the whole county.
You gonna talk about this one next?
Yes, ma'am. So, the agency's fee schedule, this next fee schedule is actually going to be environmental health fees. Um, our environmental health supervisor went to a training and realized that our fees were the lowest in the state um, when it comes to environmental health, um, services, um, for most things. Um, so I do know that the environmental health fees have not been changed since two thousand and seven, I believe, is the last time they were, I've never changed it since I've been here. So that's nine, nine years? Almost ten years, or ten years, excuse me, ten years that it's not been changed. Um, so what we decided to do is our, um, Valentina was, went to the surrounding counties, their fee schedule, and saw what actually their fees were for the same products, the same services that we were providing. And that is on that first sheet you have where it says comparison, where it says Scotland, Richmond, Oakmore, and then average.
Tim, does you, do you have an extra copy of that?
I can give you my copy.
Thank you.
You have it. Thank you. Like I said, Valentina went to, um, looked at the fee schedule for other counties, surrounding counties. Um, we do know that some counties are outliers and some, uh, we really can't compare our fees to, such as Moore County. Um, but we did try to get, uh, some, um, average of what was going on around us. As far as, um, new wells and new stepped tanks, I think we were lower than pretty much anybody else on that, that second line where it says new wells. Um, so I'll give you time, have y'all reviewed, looked at this at all? So we went and I averaged out what the cost was. I almost did an Olympic average, an Olympic average is throw out the high score, throw out the low score, then go in the middle. But we decided to do, um, just the average, and then that last column is what the committee recommended. And to clarify, that averages of the other comparable counties, not including. Not, yes. Now, comparison on these fees can be a little difficult, because Moore County is a little bit different. Um, Moore County, they, they do their, some of their stuff by number, like, for example, new existing wells, they do by bit number of bedrooms in your home. Um, so that's a little, we don't do that here. Um, so the, the only thing really that we did up, all the charges, um, after everything, some stayed the same. Um, the biggest, um, thing I think we changed was the new wells. Um, excuse me, I'll take that back, the new system, which it says new system includes IPA and CA. It wasn't a hundred and fifty, we went up to three hundred. We recommended to go up to three hundred.
You say three twenty-five on here, and you want three hundred?
On which one, I'm sorry.
On the one that says current fee, proposed fee, plus or minus, the next page? You said you've gone from one fifty to three twenty-five?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I apologize, I did not fix that on here. It is three twenty-five, that's correct.
It is three.
Three twenty-five is correct, I'm sorry.
So I don't, I don't want to be the, the, the beater upper. I can understand raising the fees of all of these things, because we're not comparable to the other, other counties. But for most of our fees, we're doubling. And we're going to the higher end of our neighboring counties. And I would much rather we raise it, but not double it immediately. Do a gradual increase, rather than like, you know, exist system renewal, we go from seventy-five to one twenty-five. Um, which would put us higher than Robeson or Hope County. I would personally much rather we do a gradual increase, rather than just a complete double of the price. That's just my personal opinion.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
What is the reason for raising it? Have the prices that we put into it raised, or?
Um, like I, well, technically, we have not raised fees since two thousand and seven.
Okay.
Um, a state consultant did come and talk to, or talked to Valentina and ask questions, and then realized that we were lower than most people in the state. It's totally up to the board, these are just recommendations from us. Um, you're more than welcome to go back in this and discuss, or whatever you'd like to do. Um, like I said, this is something new for me, I've never changed these fees before since I've been here. Um, we did try to take into account that, um, which you'll see on here that did not exist before, that last thing revisiting fee. Um, if they had to go back out and revisit a, for a permit, they were not charged, where other counties were charging for um, that, for them to have to go back out. Um, I, it's totally a recommendation from the committee, the board has to approve, so.
So these are basically evaluations?
Yes.
Evaluations of, um, existing systems, or an evaluation of somebody's putting a new system in, and that sort of thing, so. Question would be, how much time does it take? How much time does it take to evaluate any of these items?
Um, I did ask that question of environmental health, um, and they told me that the time varies. Um, a lot of times, they will go out to meet someone and then they will not be there. Um, for example, sometimes they have to go out there to, they're supposed to, when they get their permit, get their flags, mark off their land, where they want their well at, they might go out there and that person has not done that when they were supposed to, so I, it varies, and, and then they have to come back and then go back out when they call them. Um, now, if you want to get more, you need to get more detail into these fees, and I, I mean, I, we can do that.
Environmental health specialist approves it at that location. Did their final inspection, the tank is put somewhere totally and if there's problems, then that's even more time that the environmental health specialist has to spend out there to see if it's going to be feasible to have the tank in a different location. So it really depends, tank and who's putting the tank in, size of the tank, on how much time that.
So, it's not here or able to be here. She can explain this a lot better. I'm a tend to explain environmental health wells and stuff.
Is this something that we need to pass urgently, or can we table it until the next meeting for, um, her to be present? And even in her presence, I just want to consider, we're in a low wealth county.
Yes, sir.
With tax rate already. And if these things don't, as she just asked, if, well, if, if our expense is not quickly, I would be more hesitant, I'm okay with raising it, but rather than going from seventy-five to a one, you know, whatever, a drastic change, I would say go gradual. Um, and our environmental health does get a salary. Um, I do think, you know, those instances that you talk about, Ms. Dever, I think that takes care of itself. If you go out and flag it one area and it's put in another area, I'm sure you've got a policy that takes care of that and makes it, it, there, there'll be a charge. I wouldn't want us to pass this without hearing from Valentina, but I do want us as a board to just consider being more gradual in our increases. I just think about with the city, not to put them out, but I think about the city did a drastic change on their, um, I want to say where food trucks are, like, that fee. And the only excuse or reasoning we had, or the city had, was other places are charging more. And I don't think that justifies what we do in Scotland County, just to say we'll raise it because other counties are, are charging.
Me and my original plan before this came into being was actually go through each one and see how many times they have to go, how much time they spend there. You know, kind of like I do with the fees, when you have to go through that whole list, to actually through actually time and that, so if we can go back and do that, I will say, um, of course, that's once again, Valentina is not here tonight, and I cannot guarantee she will be here the next meeting, because she might be ex- yeah, she might be in the, yeah, she's due in July. So I, I just don't know, but I will get you answers the best I can. Would you prefer me go back and do the other way?
So, I was gonna say something to have, to add to kind of what would make it a of, make it easier to understand where and how the prices are coming, the increases. I'm just saying, I know inflation, we know from two thousand and seven till now, clearly, inflation happens, and we haven't it. So what we charged in two thousand and seven, we already know we need to charge more now, just for the fact that is now mathematically a dollar and fifty. So, we need to know, like, what is that rate of, you know, inflation? Like, so, like, for me, I have no problem even increasing it from what the inflation rate is, because we already know that's what you're gonna have to do anyway, because that's why we should probably pay because of inflation anyway. Give us more information as far as like, what was like inflation here? And how did, and how would those numbers look as to what would be that numerical increase? And the fees, instead of just picking like arbitrary numbers, because the state said it in the other hundred counties we hear there, because citizens in the community, we want to make sure we're using the information that we have and we know to make the decisions, instead of just like.
So would you like me to do some type of internal audit to find out, pick out certain random people, random places and find, actually went there, how much it cost us to, is that something?
You could, yeah, you can do that, kind of just random, a randomized little pick. And the inflation thing you can do for, you don't have, you know, just tell us what that is.
Now, this does not have to be approved, of the fee changes, but the fee can be changed without this part. So it does not have to be approved tonight. Um, the power policy says, and accreditation says, we look at our environmental fees once a year annually, and we.
Ms. Dever, does that make sense to you?
I have no problem with that, I would be glad to do that. Any other questions on, on that? Um, the only thing I will, I'll go back to is that revisiting fee, once again, we did not charge for that, but it is a charge in there now. Um, for that as well. Um, so, I will go back and do some more numbers and do a few audits of things that we've done, and we'll get that.
So can I ask one more question? The existing wells, where you're taking samples? Um, that's sent to a lab, I assume?
Yes.
Does the person who, uh, owns the well pay for the testing? And we just collect it, or how does that work?
We are collecting the information, and we're sending it to the state labs for it to be sent off to be tested, yes. Is that correct? I speak to my lab, because the lab actually, our lab actually does that part. Environmental health. Do you have any? I'm sorry, Valentina's just not here, no.
I just wondered if that was a separate fee, if it was all included, if they had to pay for the lab test?
Um, the existing wells down at the bottom, where you see samples, they, those are the samples we charged them to send the samples off.
Tim.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is there any percent across the board? Instead of just doubling things that, that should be fair?
Um, it is actually up to the board, there is no per se policy from the state um, for anything percentage wise, now that is um, you see the averages there, um, some of the averages we went above, some of the averages we stayed near the same. Um, I do want to also state that I did have a conversation with Thomas Milligan, um, the inspector, county inspector, and asked him how he did his, how he came up, because I know he recently and had his fees changed, and he did similar to what we did. He went to and he, um, went, I think, I don't know where he went with that, but that's what his process was. So, um, so I did ask someone else who had pre, who had experience when these fees acting, so. Some of our fees that we currently have are percentage based, with the cost plus five percent, the immunizations are the cost, round the nearest dollar, plus five percent to achieve that cost. Um, you just have to let me know how you feel, other than doing the internal audit. If that internal audit comes up to be a percentage, um, then percentages are usually easier, however, usually most time in my work with fees for clinical, they don't like percentages. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, one more question, in regards to the tattoo.
Yes, ma'am.
Is, are we doing inspections, is that what we're charging?
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, it's three hundred dollars per tattoo artist, not per tattoo parlor. So if a tattoo parlor has two tattoo artists, both of them are being charged three hundred dollars. That also includes tattoos, that includes microblading, and the eyebrows, I guess that, I don't know what to call that.
It's microblading.
Microblading, see, see, got me talking about stuff, I have no clue what we're doing.
You're doing well.
So, um, but yeah, it's three hundred dollars, it's three hundred dollars per artist, so. And they are inspected annually, or annually or six, I can't remember how often they're inspected. And the swimming pools, of course, are the people who have public pools. Any other questions?
Thank you.
I, I will definitely go back and do some research and get that information to you guys. Um, however, I do need an approval of the fee schedule for FY twenty-five, not the environmental.
Offer motion for approval of fee schedule.
Second.
We moved them properly second. Everyone in favor accepting the FY twenty-five fee schedule as presented? Say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Alright, look like the ayes have it, so we have accepted and approved the FY twenty-five fee schedule as presented with exclusion of.
Make sure you got that piece, excluding the environmental health piece. Okay. I got one more thing, and I'll be done, I promise. Um, so, me and Amanda have been working really hard on the budget this coming year. Um, so this package that you have in front of you, I apologize for just now getting it to you, because we just now were able to get for you to actually have. Um, I budget, um, the Board of to approve a budget, however, there has to be minutes that say we discussed the budget. Um, it is totally up to the Board of Commissioners, if the Board of Health has any say in the budget, or approval of the budget, all that depends on the actual county's policies. So, this is the preliminary budget. Um, I do want you to make sure that first, that first, um, sheet you see, I know you get tired of me saying this over and over again, but there's sort of ten essential public health, um, things that we do, and anytime any financial decision is made, we have to make sure we have this, um, these ten essential services in mind when we do so. That is also part of accreditation, so. So, I'm just going to review this first part here, and when it says overview, on the back attached is actually more detail, if you'd like to look line by line, um, program by program, at what we actually had and what we actually had cut. Um, so we originally had a budget, if you can see on the back, um, the very back page, um, which does not include salary fringe, I apologize for this, because this county is not giving us information. The information you have before you is information estimated from last year, which I know is not accurate, because we've got to have a two percent increase of and I'm pretty sure some people's salary are going to go up due to, um, progression steps, okay? So, like I said, this is just a preliminary due number. So, the county, we sent the county's budget in, and they come back and ask us to cut ten percent. Um, and we did. So we have cut our budget ten percent. Um, I will let you guys, everybody know that in that ten percent, a lot of that was training and travel. Um, so that means people who go to conferences that were not required for CEUs, or not required for CCE, CEUs, or not required for agreement addendums, that, some of that training was cut out. For example, NCPHA, which is our conference that we go to every year, probably about eight of us are budgeted to go. Our eastern district, where I just came back from, the beach last week, there's about six of or seven of us that go, there's in the budget. Those that have been cut out of this budget. Um, because that's the first place I could find to cut, was trainings and travel. Um, but if the board decides that they would like to look somewhere else to cut and put those back in, that's totally up to you guys. Um, I'll just go through the overview real quick, and then you, we can discuss it. Um, projected salary fringe, three million five ninety, five hundred ninety thousand, operating expenses with ten percent cut, one million eighty-four thousand. So the total expenditure of the health department was four million six hundred and seventy-four thousand and eight, four, seventy-four and eight dollars. The grant revenue, which is the money we get in from our AAs and our grants, um, is one million three seventy-seven, five eighty-one, and the generated revenue by the clinic is nine hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and sixty. Um, and environmental health re- revenue you see there is forty thousand. I put that there, so you can actually know what kind of number we're looking at when it comes to environmental health's revenue. Um, so total revenue is a two million three hundred and forty-eight thousand, so that means the difference between the revenues and the expenses is what the county puts into the health department. So that is currently projected, now, it's like I said, this is a preliminary number, at two million three hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars, which means the health department is fifty percent funded by the county. And that funding from the county makes up nine cents on the county's tax rate. So, I try to be as detailed as I can.
You laying it out.
Yeah, I was on the phone with Beth, I said, Beth, you gotta tell me how much, how much, uh, county, I seen it is on the tax rate, so I can get to this board meeting. Um, but yes, so I try to let you know, and I try to tell people all the time, how much the county puts into. How much the county puts into the health department, how much of the dollar ninety nine cents tax rate goes to operate the health department. So I think that's pretty, pretty pertinent information. For them to know.
Thank you, Tim.
Any questions? Like I said, this is just more as a discussion piece, there's, um. Anything on that back, on the back sheets that you see that are highlighted in pink or orangish or whatever, they're where I cut. Those are actually line items that I could, that were cut, excuse me, me and Miss Amanda cut, I'm sorry. I have a bad habit of saying my money and my cut and so I'm sorry. But, um. Any questions?
Amanda and the staff for, um, the. Was that the county manager and Board of Commissioners has made across the board. And, uh, thank you all for doing it and doing it with a smile. If not.
I can't get to the beach next year, right?
Yeah. And you're smiling.
I'm smiling, alright, okay.
We appreciate it though.
Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
You may not know, actually you might know, what is our county tax rate?
And our hope is at least maintain it, not raise it. We can't cut it, nine nine. We don't want, we may not be able to cut it, but we want to at least try to maintain it.
Ninety nine cents, nonsense of it is the health department. I can tell you that part. But, um, also back to the other part, we're talking about clinical, we talked about revenues, we talked about different things. When we raise fees, I know it's, we're trying, we're trying to make money, public health is never going to make money, it's not going to happen. However, it is in due diligence, our due diligence to try to make up that monies if possible. To put a less burden on the county, so the county puts less money into the health department, so the. Be lowered, or either the employees get in some type of incentive for doing so.
Right.
Did I throw that in there?
Right. We got it, that's why you're smiling.
Exactly, so, um, anytime we can raise fees or check our fees and make sure that we're charging exactly what we, we can get by with. Or can get by, um, I would like, it's not next month, but maybe the next meeting. I would really like to talk to you guys about the details of Medicaid cost settlement and the Medicaid. Whole big old circle, um, I would whole process to use because I was, I was a little confused about the process myself for a while. Until I went to this training this week, this past week, and I got some really good information and I finally understood. What the state was, and Medicaid was trying to do. Now, I didn't say they did it right, but I understand what they're trying to do. So I would like to come back before you and probably and, and give you a little more detail on that, if that's something you would like. Because that is Medicaid dollars and I did mention it to, um, Dr. Singletary, you know, that we did, and there was a. Issue with, I ask, I perceive, professionally ask other counties what they deal with their Medicaid. Um, and a lot of them said, well, it goes back to the health department, it goes back into an escrow account for the health department. Um, so then I asked how. There's a letter from the state attorney that talks about how that money belongs to the health department. And Stephen Garner, who is over this program, has said he is be willing to have a Zoom meeting with Dr. Singletary. And the county manager or any county commissioner that has liked for him to explain how that situation, how that process works. So if you're interested in that, I will get it with Stephen Garner and he can. Explain that whole process.
Learning more is always better.
Alright.
So the more you know. So.
I appreciate the board wanting to know, because I have had the board before not asking me any questions. So I do not mind at all answering any questions.
Yeah, so go, you can go ahead.
Okay, alright, we'll do.
Tim, did you consider cutting the ten percent from any other activities? Man, or line items, I mean, I know that, uh, it sounds like the trainings are kind of the low hanging fruit, that was the first to be considered. Is there, is there anything second or third down that list?
There were secondary and third things, there were, um, you do guys know, we do do outreach events here at the health department. Um, sorry, I said do do, didn't. I'm sorry, um, but, um, we have outreach events and. You have items at that outreach event, because we are a marketable agency. We do market our services where maybe other agencies in the county don't market their services, Parks and Rec markets their services. We market our services, tax office doesn't market their service, if you don't pay them, you're going to jail, right? So, so we actually have the ability to market our service, to get more money, to more fees in, to collect, so we can offset costs. So a lot of the stuff that was cut was those promotional items, for example, if you came by our table and got a pen, a cup. A stress ball, a little thing that you got right there in front of you, a little, um. Notebook with the pen, yes, those are things that we did have to cut. Because they were not necessary items, however, they're wonderful items for us to have. Um, so those are some of the things that we cut other than just travel. And there are a few little odd and stuff where I just adjusted because I felt like maybe we would be suffice. Cutting five hundred here, a thousand here, some odd number here, so.
So office supplies was in the area. And also uniform cost. Um, we had put in one amount for uniforms for our environmental health and animal control. Because we, we've always helped with their uniform costs and we've had to cut significantly on that, cut back. So that was another item.
And I don't think our animal control chart is going to be approved, so I, I'd had to take that out this way.
We had a desperate need.
Yeah, and we've had it broken down twice now.
We had one towed in last month, then the other one. Um, was in the shop for over a week and it costed us seventeen hundred to get out, but. Don't think it'll be approved this year.
You don't think it'll be approved?
I don't think any of these are going to be approved this year.
I heard, I heard vehicle neutral, and when I hear vehicle neutral in a meeting, I'm assuming that means vehicle neutral, so, um. Would hate to put the county commissioner on the spot. But when I hear vehi- vehicle neutral, that meant for the whole county.
Yeah, from a personal standpoint, you know, you have to think about repairs on old vehicles and in the end, depending on how many repairs you have to have.
And we are very thankful that we have been able to purchase a CRV in the past few years, we've been able to purchase a Nissan Kicks for the past year. We were able to replace two of our Malibu, uh, two thousand eight Malibu, Malibus with, um. What are they now? No, they were Impalas, now they're in Malibus, so we were able to replace, so we have been able and we have the, um, outreach fan.
Just because I know everybody wants me to respond. Board of Commissioners are just in a position where we're trying to balance our budget. With some of the changes that were made, we did a salary study that brought a lot of changes in salaries. Um, there were a lot of things that we did because we have ARPA funds, those funds are gone away. And so one of the areas that we are trying to maintain is to get away without doing a lot of vehicle purchases this year. So that we can catch up and, and, and fall back in line next year now, nobody's happy there. Because they need their vehicle, but that's just one of those areas that we're trying to maintain vehicle neutral. Uh, don't know how long that'll last, um, but that's the, that's the goal.
In regards to animal control, so how often are they using all their vehicles and they can, they condense down to one or two?
Uh, we have two animal control officers, one covers the, the northern half of the county, the other covers the southern half of the county. There are two, um, two thousand sixteen F one fifties. Um, both of them, one of them is approaching two hundred thousand miles, the other is close to two hundred, not far, close to two, but it's not as much. Uh, but we've had issues with both of them.
And what's the rate of calls that they're getting currently?
That would be in that, your report that you're going to give next.
Oh, what's the rate of calls? So how often are they getting called out and how fast?
That would be in her, in the health's reddish report.
Yeah, um, they stay very busy, very, very, very busy. Uh, I can say what, when one was towed in this month. We had to go over to maintenance and borrow a truck and luckily we found a dog box. That was out at the landfill, not landfill, a water treatment. And put on there for them to use, I mean, we couldn't function with just one truck. And with that, environmental health also has a truck that's about to go out on us. It's a twenty ten.
It's twenties, it's two thousand seven.
Two thousand seven.
Silverado.
So. When it comes to trucks, we.
I don't know if this is possible, but is there another type of truck that they can use for the same work? Like can they convert one of the trucks that the county already has?
I would have to defer that to Joey, the county's mechanic. Um, because we looked at when getting the, asking for the new vehicle. We looked at possibly just saving the box from the old vehicle and putting it on the new box, however, vehicles change. And their beds change, um, we were lucky this time and we got our environmental, excuse me, environmental control trucks. That the boxes fit on the bed, the ones we had previous, we had to take the bed off and the chassis off and put the box on. So, um, it is cheaper to do so, but after checking with Joey, uh, at the maintenance, he said that, that they would not fit. Onto that, so we have, we have looked through other options of how to get things, um, done, so. And I will just end with this one thing, um, there are no increases, step increases. Um, new positions, um, reclass, anything in this budget, correct? That I'm aware of.
We don't have any.
So we don't have any idea what they, so.
We were, department heads, um, were given an operating budget to work with. But as far as salary that's being handled by county.
Yeah, we, we have no idea.
So we don't know what that looks like.
So like I said, that salary fringe number is just a preliminary estimate from last year.
And so you, so this is, this is what you, this is an initial attempt. And so some of these things will be massaged before the final attempt.
If the county decides to come back and cut more, then I will have to.
Massage some more.
I don't know how much more can massage, but.
I know. Because you've cut pretty much, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. Ah, let me apologize, I spoke out of turn when I said that, that is not my ability to talk about salary infringement and personnel issues. It's something that was incorrect, because strike from. About salary infringement, taking positions, because that, I apologize, that was what I needed to say. And one more clarification and I. Week, last time, last week, last meeting I talked about different types of reports that you guys wanted. To, for me to bring to you, and I said that accreditation says two additional, I was incorrect. It is one additional report other than the report I give every month, so it's only one. So now I have to find one additional report to give other than those two, so I just want to clarify that I did speak wrong. Any questions? I'm taking up so much of your time, I appreciate your discussion.
We appreciate you.
It looks like you did, you did a good job, Tim.
Yeah.
Thank you, Tim.
Yes, I was like, you did well, you took some suggestions from last year and we can tell that. You put them in this year, you took some work, took some time. Um, next, we will have, um, our clinical report from Donna Page. And I know where we have, uh, made some requests, uh, as a board to our health director. Which probably also be some additional requests to reports that come. That we want some additional information, because we're, just like Tim said, we had, we, we want to know, we want to learn. So we ask questions, because that's how you learn and you find out.
So, hello.
And this was in our.
The first que, I'm, I'm gonna talk about, let me start with heart, if you don't know what art stands for, it's our HIV. Resource team. Education and resource team, so we do fundraisers through the year, I'm not on the heart team. Odd that I'm not, because I do a lot of HIV stuff. But we do fundraisers throughout the year, like soup and salad, different things, and we use those funds. To actually help our HIV patients, we give them, if they need small amount. All of the patients that we have in our clinic are allotted a certain amount per year out of the money that's raised through the heart program. And it can help them with gas for transportation, it can help them with co-pays. Something, I, I can work with certain programs and get those co-pays taken care of too, but sometimes it's like a four dollar co-pay and they just need four dollars. So we use that money from the fundraisers to support our HIV program and our patients. We give them gift cards for Christmas and care packages at Christmas. So that money's used for those, and they also get a care package once a month with like toilet tissue and toothpaste. Things like that in and deodorant, shampoo, dish detergent. So that's how we, with our heart team, that, and, and some of the funds like we do our vigil, our candlelight vigil, our HIV candlelight vigil. That seed money for that comes a certain percentage of the money raised goes back to seed money for another, for other events. So that, um, and I, I think we're actually, I've never heard of another county that does this except us. So I'm, it's been here a long time, I'm proud of it and our patients love us. Because they do get, I mean, they make a special trip just to pick up their care packages and, um, some of them really need it. It makes a big difference in their life and in their day. As far as our. And our meetings, this was something Dr. Singletary wanted to know about. How's it beneficial and provide dividends for the county and the citizens? And public health are mandated. AAs, um, that we have to, to do to be able to, to keep our agreement addendums and get the state funds. And of course, the knowledge is power, so anytime you learn, um. It's always a good thing because our patients are going to reap the rewards of our knowledge. Use it back in our programs. So there's, um, a long time ago in the health department, I started in the health department in nineteen ninety seven. Um, we used to do like a train to trainer, so you go to a program. When you come back, you share some of that information with everyone else. And so we still do that, but sometimes. It is just like I went to with my STD update. That's where I got the idea to do the swabs for the mobile van to do STD testing on the mobile van since we don't have a table in there. Um, so that's one thing I learned from there that I was able to bring back and do something with. So, um, let's see, Epi Team, I don't know if you guys know what an Epi Team is, how many know what Epi Team is? So Erie County in North Carolina is required to have one. And, um, I'm the chair of the Epi Team and so it's a, a group of different stakeholders, hospital, um, home health. Um, EMS. Several people like lab, admin, um, environmental health, school system. So all these are on my Epi Team and so we come together. Um, a couple of times a year to go over certain Epi trends and. Some people, the last time I went to an Epi Team training, the lady that was at the table, she said, well, I don't know what to do with my Epi Team. What do I talk about at every meeting? And so you can actually, so it, it's, it was created after nine eleven, basically is when Epi Team happened. Um, a lot of money was sent out into the world because of the nine eleven attack and all the things that were happening. So it's basically if we should have a major outbreak, COVID doesn't count because it was way bigger than our little Epi Team. But if, say, we would have a local outbreak, a salmonella, something like that in one of our restaurants, the Epi Team comes together. As a group and, and even we may have to pull in state resources depending on the size. But, um, we of course always have access to state epidemiologists too, through all our programs. So that is what the Epi Team does, and again, it is a requirement. Um, the requirements are not as stringent as they were back in. A little bit and they usually try to do an. Um, that I think this one was the first one since. Because COVID, we didn't have any Epi Team trainings. But it updates you and gives you some ideas about how to work with your Epi Team and different topics to discuss and. Um, current events of epidemiology, so lots of good information comes from our Epi Team trainings and that like, it's an annual training. I think three, did three of us go this time? Yeah, and, um. The YouTube, we had YouTube, you twit. Quit to quit is a smoking cessation program for pregnant women, but we use it for all patients. Um, it's been in our health department for years, we can actually deal for that. Um, so anyone that comes in that's a smoker, um, talks about the five A's. Some of the, the nurses have had it, some are new, so UNC does the training, so they came in. And they trained us on the YouTube quit to quit, those people who had not had it and we. And we utilize it through all of our programs for anyone who's, who needs to be, um, learn how.
That's something like if they do it, we, you just, it's like a, you just bill it. So it's part of like a, a visit where it's always something you know you're gonna say, so it's always a part of the bill. I know there's probably. Okay. I'm asking, so the reason I has, I sent her some questions pre our meeting, when I reviewed this, because I wanted to hear the explanation and answer behind some of the questions of what training? How are they bringing those things back to our county to be useful? Because we are just here. We just hear them say, oh, they did this, this, this and this. But we don't know how that has been beneficial, because we have not been presented things previously to help us to really put a measure to how well we are doing as a health department to service the needs of the county. And when you don't have that data in those numbers, when you go make requests for certain things, you don't have anything to stand on except saying, well, this is what we do. Well, how has that been impactful though? So people want numbers and data. So we want to make sure that we, we know the work we do. But in public health, people do not understand or see the, the benefits from the work we do. So we have to make that very clear to them. They're not going to take that second step to understand why the trainings are important for them and why it's important for us. Public health has never been in a place where you walk in and you understand what it is. So we ask these because these are things we need to know and we want to have presented in the meeting to understand so that when people ask, well, why do we not want to cut eight thousand dollars from training? We don't have anything to say why we can't count, why don't you cut it from there? That's why he was, you know, I know, he answered, he's like, trainings are what you have to do in public health to stay current. And so we need to know, people want to know that we're. At trainings that are not benefiting our people. And so I, that's why I made requests for sometimes you'll see that we have some different presentations from how the Health Director will do her report, because we want to get it to the bottom line. So we, we have to make some changes because now we're, we're really in the throes of, we don't have the data to support. And if I don't have the data to fight for us, to see what we need in public health, then we just have to take what they give us. And that's why now Tim is. Cutting training that is necessary, but if it's not funded through a grant, we can't go.
Other counties are doing and your, your parts in crime and, and resources that you can pull from these people. Um, so we get a lot out of the trainings that we go to and yeah, it's fun too. But we do meet new people and learn new things. Kathy, health educators get to see you.
We all, we, like, we all like trainings. So I was like, we, we not trying to downplay, because we saying we all know training. So we have the, we have the same, you know, things we have to keep up with. So we want them to know that like, we're, we're not coming here to make you guys' life hard. We're doing it because we need that thing so that we can make your life easier and better going forward. So just know, we might have some more questions, meetings might run a little longer. But we're doing it for the people of Scotland County. For us, right? So I just wanted to get that out there. So that when she wondered like why she explaining everything, I actually sent her these questions before.
I just like to talk a lot.
She not just, she was, yeah, I asked her these questions before, but I also want her to be prepared. So I don't want to be up here and ask her and she just say, oh, no, I come back in two months. Well, we gonna forget in two months and you gonna have a whole nother page to talk about. So I sent it to her.
I probably won't put as much on the next one.
That means that it wasn't necessary to put on the first.
That's true. A lot of it is repetitive. I will say that. Um, like with the P P A T, which stands for Permanency Planning Action Team, if anybody wants and can remember that. Um, the social worker Betsy does this every month, sometimes twice a month. And it's a, a collaborative meeting with social services. And they get together and, um, talk about, it's foster care and how foster care children. Um, it's a team meeting of professionals, basically. Even the, um, officers come in and sit in a meeting. So part of Betsy's job as a social worker and care manager for children is to be part of this team. And some of those social workers will sit in, but Betsy usually does it every month. And it takes all day long. It's an eight hour thing that she sits and does all day long.
I do have a question about, um, the child fatality prevention. I noticed on the, on the budget, we spent about seventeen thousand dollars on it. Can you explain what that is?
Child, yeah, that's on my list. Um, Child Fatality Prevention Team, and we've had a spotlight on it recently. And you, we probably weren't here yet. Um, Child Fatality Prevention Team, Carlotta and Joey are actually the two nurses that are over that program. And it is also a required program by the state. And they look at last year's cases, fatal deaths in children. Um, and they pull all the records on those deaths. And they get together and have a meeting to discuss why these children died, how it can be prevented. And then they actually take action based on some of those outcomes to do certain community events or and fire safety dependent, but that's. Now, as far as the money, that should be out of our budget. Yeah. Okay. Adolescent Wellness Council Meeting, um, not on this, um, but it is a group of community that come together and they're the ones that did the A A Easter account. And some of the other things y'all done. We did a lot of, a lot of trying to get teens involved and, um, just getting out in the community. And so that's what the Adolescent Wellness Council Meeting is. I'm not, I'm not part of that, that group. I step in every now and again, but I'm not a permanent member. Yeah, yeah, and pregnancy prevention, yeah. But y'all also talked about tobacco cessation and all kinds of things through that to try to reduce. Um, we did suicide prevention one year. Mm-hmm, yeah, did the Halloween, we did, was it the bowling, was the bowling thing? Yeah, the team bowling event. So we do all sorts of things with Child Fatality Prevention Team. And I'll go back to talking about the social workers with, you'll see, and this again is a repetitive item. With Caroline complete, the blue, those, um, all of the Medicaid Management Entities. Betsy meets with them regularly to make sure that they are meeting their metrics. And that, um, they, if they have any problems, issues, needs. So Betsy frequently meets with the Medicaid Management and our, this is a program that is in danger of us losing it. Um, Betsy, I. Community Care, North Carolina for a while and I was over seven counties. And bit, Scotland County, Betsy's team always, always was at the top of the list for my seven counties. She always done excellent. Ms. Amanda was in one of those counties too. But it was, um, it, it's changing and they're gonna take this program away from us if we don't continue to keep our metrics and our, our, um, everything up with those programs. There is a possibility that we could lose it in, what, twenty twenty-five? They moved it. So we're working real hard to make sure that the social workers and they keep fostering that relationship between those entities, doing a good job. Because they will have the option to go with a health department versus private entities. So we're hoping we just can keep doing a good job that we always do and that they'll stick with Scotland County Health Department to manage their, their pregnant women and their children. That's what I'm gonna say, our pregnant women and our children. Um, let's see. What else? Dr. Singletary, anything else?
Well, no, my main thing was I wanted you to notice that I, I don't want just to put on here stuff just to like feel it. I want it to be like, if they're doing, if we don't hear, like, they going to a trainer, I want to know what they got back from that trainer. Like what, they can do their own thing and all it just needs to say was, this was to help with whatever, like what, like this was for the infant mortality thing, or this was for this grant. And it will help to fulfill the requirement. We, we, that's what I'm saying. We don't know that you're going to these. The money we're supposed to. Cause we want to be an active board, not just, you know, we want to be active. We want to see things grow. So those are questions that because for me, I don't know what they're, I don't know what they're for. So I, you guys know, because you've been here for a while. So we don't know. So you can't. We, we need to know those things because we're trying to gain that knowledge so that when we're going and we are talking about what we're doing here, advocating for what we need here, that we can use the lingo where people know that we just not saying stuff. So I think you, you did get them, but that's the thing, we want, we want to know what they're for. Like if, if it's something that she does, because it's part of her job that she do every month, every two months, she won't gotta put it on here.
Okay.
Cause that's what she's supposed to do, right? But if it's a training that it's beneficial and they got something from it, we want to know that, because we want to know that, all right, they're using that money. We, maybe we don't need to cut that much from training or incentives or things, because we know that it's being used to keep us in compliance.
Yeah, and I mean, we, we wouldn't be in accredited donors agency if we didn't.
But that's not like we want to know. So it's just, we want to know those things. I think that's all the questions I had said.
Uh, again, you, you know, I started, yeah, back in ninety-seven. Um, I left in two thousand eight, be a child health nurse at high school. But public health back in those days was very dark. And we worked, it reminded me hearing things like, going to go find a dog box somewhere to put on a truck. I mean, we were so used to working with nothing. Um, and now instead of progressing out, because when I came back, I was very impressed with the technology we actually had. I mean, and, uh, that we could go to trainings. It was wonderful, you know, I was excited and, but I do feel like we're regressing instead of. I just do. And, and it's sad to me that.
And some of that regression is because we in a recession.
Yeah.
So it's not just the Health Department. You feel it everywhere. Like I feel the same way when I have to go to clinic and see thirty patients and I can only give them fifteen minutes. You know, that's a general feeling that everyone's feeling in the country is, we all feel like, and the truth is, COVID came and changed everything in our world. And so it's not. Thing, we literally had to find a newfound. Cause COVID swept everything out. COVID made public health completely different and it also shown, sh- shined a light on what people were not paying attention to with public health. So now we're, we're regressing. People may feel that way. But it's because we're now starting and people are giving us some things we need to build a stronger foundation to build on. So that if another COVID come, God forbid not while we alive or whatever, it does not do what it just did to us and take three years to recover. So just know, you're not fighting it alone. You, we might feel that, but we all know that you, you still got, you still got your. We, we know what it's like. And that's why we, we gotta work together, stay together, stay tight. So that we can make sure that we do what's best for the citizens, since we got the, we already was on the Rocky Foundation. We, we didn't have, we're in a poor county. So we gotta all sometimes eat peanut butter and jelly, so that everybody can get a peanut butter and jelly sandwich.
And you know, I will say this, we are, we are seeing it in the private sector at all our offices. It's the same thing. But the other thing is, I would like to say this to you, because, you know, I was over here at the Health Department during COVID. And I have to say, if it had not been for this Health Department Scotland County, I did not know how the county would have gotten through it. And that's the truth. Y'all, um, y'all just, you just massaged everything into what was needed for the citizens of Scotland County. And I saw that for myself. So you did an excellent. It was a major, major, major deal for this country and for the small. But the Health Department stepped right up and did a fabulous job. And we saw that with our own eyes here in Scotland County. I was very impressed every time I came in, every time I came in. So it may be, it may be a year or two late, but remember things do change. So you, you are on top of your game and we know that. Appreciate it and we want to hear about it, because we want to be able to clap our hands and say, good job.
Yes.
So let's do that. Good job.
Yes. Absolutely.
Yeah, that's what we want.
Good comment.
Any more questions?
No, we good. Now we gonna move on to the Health Director's Report. Thank you, Donna.
As Dr. Singletary, uh, mentioned earlier, I have changed the report a little bit from the way I was, uh, originally reporting. So, um, focused more now on the strategic plan and where we're at with that and how we're meeting, uh, our goal. One of, the first strategic planning goal is to invest in community-led solutions to advance he- health equity. And, uh, what I want to report on this month is the mobile unit is being scheduled for outreach events. Saturday, we had it here at the Health Department for our spring summer event. Um, we promoted immunizations, but I think we only had one person that was interested in getting immunizations. But we're hoping to, uh, increase that. Uh, we're scheduled next month, well, in two weeks, we're gonna be at the Gibson, uh, what, a hundred and twenty-five year celebration. And we're gonna provide immunization day. And we've also been invited to Community Day at I A Johnson on June fifth. And so we're gonna have the mobile unit there. Um, Donna mentioned earlier that she had went to a training for S T I. She brought back some updates. She found out that we can, um, use urine test and self swaps. So that is another way that we're gonna be able to use the mobile unit, um, that we. Uh, she found a, a way. Nicole's not here tonight, but she called me about Sycamore Lane Primary School Kindergarten Orientation. Uh, they have asked us to come out and do immunizations for their, uh, kindergarten orientation. She's supposed to get back with a date for me for that. So the mobile unit will be there. Um, the other, uh, thing I want to talk about was the postpartum home visits. Ms. Joey happens to be with us tonight. She rolled that program all out in February and it's going strong. She's, uh, seeing more and more of the postpartum women and, um, the newborns. So we're happy they are, uh, this sort delivers educational services and helps and social the family, uh, in their homes. Um, the other thing is we have been awarded a Women's Health Grant that will start in July. It's a grant that, um, we're, um, gonna receive a hundred and fifty thousand per year for the next three years. His is to increase access to contraceptives in satellite clinics in the community. So we are partnering with Saint Andrews. Uh, Donna and I met with them and every Wednesday, I think we're looking at Wednesdays. Um, in the fall, we will be there to do a satellite women's clinic, family planning clinic there. We hope if it's successful that we can span, expand to other areas of the county. I have had conversations with our county manager about possibly having a room at I A Johnson to where we may be able to do some of the satellite clinics there. So we're hoping to. We're very excited to get the. we're very excited to get the Women's Health Grant.
What can that one hundred and fifty thousand, what are what are the limitations?
Um, it can be spent for the actual contraceptive. So for community health workers that family planning services, two, two part-time. One will uh, which I hadn't had a chance to speak with Ms. Joey about this, can work with Ms. Joey when she goes out to see the postpartum home visits, on the postpartum home visits. If they don't already have Medicaid or realize for a year postpartum, the community health workers can in getting those Medicaid applications. Do Medicaid expansion.
And so this will be, is just for contraception, so this couldn't be for like the test, like if they need an STD testing and stuff that comes?
We can do that as part of the clinic, uh, Donna. Yeah, Donna had mentioned that when we met with um through the Family Planning Clinic, they will do testing.
So that could be both boys and girls or just girls?
We're looking at boys and girls.
Boys and girls, that's all, okay.
Yeah. You could get the the old C N S William.
Can you help define what Family Planning Services is? Like, what, that's a broad spectrum, but besides contraception, what else is taught or what else is included in that?
Uh, well, like Dr. Singletary was saying, STI um testing can be done with that. And they provide education on the different family planning methods.
And so in regards to family planning, because most people at Saint Andrews aren't married, so are you referring to young people that are in Saint Andrews or?
Well, when it says family planning, it doesn't necessarily mean that you're planning a family, that is um reproductive health, I guess is the way to put it, you don't have to be married to participate in our Family Planning Clinic, is to or be an unplanned birth. I guess would be the best way. We intend to be.
So if it's not the time when you at Saint Andrews.
Stop it.
From right now. But I think Andrews location, location-wise, is because it's also, you could meet with, meet the population of the college. You can correct me if you want, and the fact that it's also um near other lower-income communities where that may have transportation issues where it's easier for that tra, they can take that transportation to get to Saint Andrews as opposed to maybe making it to the Health Department or making it to the other side of town at I A J, which is why they're looking at I A J because if you make it there, then that area is easier for them to get. So it's like putting in a location that's
big barrier.
But Saint Andrews focus is for Saint Andrews students, not the community around it, it's for the students, correct?
But if you do it there, it's for everyone or just the school?
We really could see everyone as long as Saint Andrews.
I'm sure because Saint Andrews has some limitations, I'm sure.
And so in this.
That's a population that needs to be served.
Yes, that's like.
That's it.
See if you can do that. It, so in the training or whenever you guys are offering this training, is it talked about to the youth about how to make good choices as well, or is it just here's contraception and here's more money to pour out into that?
Yes, it is.
So not drinking, uh, excess, things like that, things that are obvious.
And two, education about their reproductive health, you know, some teenagers aren't real sure about that and about anatomy and physiology and how everything works, a lot of education for young people as well.
Yes, yes. Thank you for putting me on the spot, I was just waiting my turn. Okay, did have an annual meeting um today, just to further than settings like this, we could share information. Um, and it was just our opening to to learn that it's not just for you to come and get that kind of thing, it helps uh women with fertility issues with, you know, I can't afford it, I wanna have a child, but I need help with finding out how to do it. Um, if they, if it can't be provided here without they will do whatever, provide whatever service that they can and then offer referrals out to the appropriate healthcare provider so they can get that um additional help. Um, and I think in our rural area, that's a lot of where we people because they don't have the knowledge. And the promotions of our Health Department as they're talking about here this evening is important so that people know that it may be financially unaffordable for me to get to a specialist, but knowing that they have the Health Department to and and see someone who is a professional and can help them get that foundation, that understanding of what they need to do for their specific situation. And yes, they do include the knowledge base of abstinence and and all those things before they get to the nuts and bolts. But as I said, I was saying in the meeting and afterwards, we have to be aware that our youth and young adults, they know a lot more than what I knew. Uh, Grandma just said, don't do it, and I didn't do it. And when I did, I knew what I was doing. Um, but our population has got to to not hide behind this knowledge base. Um, I'm a Christian, I believe in the Bible and all that it says, but everybody that goes to church and 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 exposed to that information, they're still not doing what the Bible says. So we've got to make sure that we provide them with everything that they need to make a decision that won't have them, oh, I shouldn't have done that. Or we find children who are put in situations where they're mistreated and abused, where if we've given them all the tools, they can make, be sure that they plan carefully and can take care of their responsibilities.
And and my question's in regards to this is because, you know, the point of public health is to, or at least my understanding is to minimize to empower people to make good decisions so that they're not dependent on others. And if we continue, and it sounds like they're doing a good job, but if we continue to just pour out contraceptions on these young people that are already making that decision, they will never get out of the system that we want to empower them to get out of.
Right, and one of the things that we kinda closed with was we had to do a survey of the family planning and that was one of the things that we were talking about and putting on our survey is to making those connections, where are youth and young adults? Reality is that Saint Andrews and our high school guidance counselors were really key because in those spaces, youth and young adults are there a for a long time, long periods of time, and they find confidants in those people in those spaces. And if they are empowered with knowledge of our Health Department, they can guide those youth and young adults toward making right decisions and have what they need to do with.
And our health educator, Jenna, away at a conference, so she couldn't be here tonight. That's one of the curriculums that she uses at Saint Andrews and at the high school, it's called Making Proud Choices. And um, so that is already being provided before we even see this grant, so she's already in there. Providing that curriculum.
So this grant will actually give us two more workers that could do what Jenna's doing, like going out to actually meet the people.
It will provide for two community health workers. It uh will provide for our family planning provider, she will go out with the satellite clinic. We will need a a nurse there, registration and a lab person. So we will have a lot of staff that's gonna be participating and out on these satellite clinics. Our strategic plan goal number two is to promote healthy behaviors to en- enhance an individual's health and wellness. Uh, we're currently holding Family Night on the first Mondays of every month. Uh, this is a program that Jenna um is holding at the Health Department. The event is growing, at our April Family Night, we had thirty-six registered participants. Each month, uh, a different parenting skill is introduced, education games and dinner are provided for the families. Um, we're also having Milk Mondays, what that is, is every Monday for uh, our, it's a breastfeeding support group. So our breastfeeding mom come in and uh get support um from each other and from our breastfeeding peer counselor. Um, we're averaging around ten breastfeeding women each week. According to our most recent community health assessment, diabetes is the leading cause of death in Scotland County. So we are initiating the Diabetes Education Program. Um, the program's being promoted, we've received letters of support from the local physicians. Uh, and we're in the last stage of being accredited through the Diabetes Association so that we can actually bill for that service at the Health Department. And we plan to roll out the pilot um mid-May. Uh, strategic plan goal three, ensure public health is prepared for emergency response in a disaster or communicable disease outbreak. According to general statute, the Health Department is responsible for rabies control in the county. We continue to still have issues with having space at the Humane Society, uh, available kennels. Our animal control officers uh have to be, have a place to bring in the strays that are, they are called on. There was a meeting with myself, our county manager, the city man- manager and the shelter manager to discuss these problems. We are still being told by the shelter, even after that meeting, that they continue to be ma- at max capacity and can only receive aggressive animals. So we get calls that, hey, there's a stray dog in my yard that doesn't belong to me and I don't know who the owner is, there's no rabies tag on it, I need the animal control to come pick it up, okay? We have nowhere to take that animal unless it's bit somebody or is aggressive. And we are seeing an increase in dog bites this year. Therefore, we've had to buy more rabies vaccines. So that's what Tim was mentioning when he said that there was an increase.
So with the aggressive like animals and those things, like how? How, what's like the process, like do they, do people just, is it like a number, like they call animal control and say, hey, this dog is chasing children down the street? And then they go out and assess, and so if they deem them aggressive, like how do they?
If they are deemed aggressive, the shelter will has to be deemed aggressive. They're not.
They're not going, so they, once they bring them in? So once they bring them in, they going straight to euthanization.
So therefore, um, if they're not aggressive, my animal control.
Even if they, so they they have to be like.
They can be a nuisance, but if they're not.
Yeah, they got to be like, I'm about to bite you aggressive.
Before my guys were able to actually.
They're just random nuisance, they just, they just left because we don't have any way to put them.
They don't have any way.
So in other counties, are you seeing this as an issue and if so, how are they handling this, or is this just this our shelter in our county?
Um, in every county, it's different, I mean, some counties actually own their shelter. Uh, some contract, like I know Richmond County is looking for somewhere to contract now because they were contracting with K two and K something. And that contract failed to, so it just depends on the county. But yeah, you're, I'm seeing this across the state, when I go to the Health Directors' meetings, I'm seeing it across the state.
So after you, I mean, I know this is a constant issue and we talked about it in our commission meeting as well. And the only thing I just keep thinking is that we can't allow ourselves, city or county, to continue to be held at the liberty of the shelter without having a backup plan. So have you county managers, city manager considered, we may need another option other than our shelter? Because this has been, at least three or four years, we've been having a constant issue. And of course, you know how we plan to do on our end, but still, should we hold back, should we not be considering another option?
I think we really do need another option because this one is just, the meeting that we had on March the eleventh, um, they're currently licensed for sixty-five dogs. She, when she gets thirty dogs, she says, oh, I'm maxed out. So my issue with her at the meeting was, okay, if you're maxing out at thirty, but your license are for sixty-five, I don't understand. And she says she's gonna have their license changed to reduce the numbers because she just don't have the funds.
What are they built for, six of her?
Because you can put two per.
I think we need to start looking at another.
Did she say it's a staffing issue out there as well?
No, she says it's a kennel issue that they don't.
But it was built for sixty-five.
Is that because she has instead of two per, it's one per, it sounds like how this is being treated.
Put one.
But is it because all those thirty or thirty-two and a half are all aggressive? And she trying to keep things separate or just wanna double up?
Immediately, she's not holding them. And my concern is if we have a dog bite and the dog is brought in, we have to quarantine that dog for ten days. If we, if she doesn't hold us a kennel, what we can do with? If the dog got, if we don't know who the owner is, we can't get the owner to quarantine it. If it does have an owner and the owner's not responsible enough and lets the uh, animal run loose, then you can't really trust them to quarantine the animal for ten days, so.
So what I understand from that shelter, because I've been there, it is a private-run entity, it's run by a board, right? So with the Humane Society, it's when they're run by a board, I've worked in both county-run shelters and Humane Society shelters. They, whoever runs it assesses how many they can take, it's kind of a win. When you're running counties, there's a certain time limit for those animals because things are coming in, things need to go out. So they're not, my current assessment of their situation is they're not able to make decisions to get things out, which is a problem, especially from accounting, because like Amanda Bieber was saying, if there is that quarantine time and that animal's microchip, you cannot put it down, you cannot euthanize it at that point. You have to wait until it shows signs or you have to wait that period of time. And that will stick us in a very big problem. Um, so yes, I think that going to other options, now do we still pay them even though they're not taking the animals in currently?
Are we paying them for not taking?
We we presently are, however, in our upcoming budget, we're looking at.
Yes.
And also.
Is there not another number of reserve spots for?
Well, we give them an annual contribution from the county. And our last conversation was to hold back until we can find a better agreement, which is why I'm saying if we're gonna hold back, we may need to use that funding for another.
The actual contract with with them hadn't been updated in a long time, I'm talking like ten or fifteen years. I was able to locate that contract and I passed it on to our county manager who has passed it on to the county attorney and they're in the process of renegotiating that contract.
Could we contract out with another county temporarily until we build a new facility or take over a new facility?
That would be a question, the commissioner gets.
That's an option, that's another option.
Is your a- availability, you've got, you know, off currently?
I don't know.
I don't know.
Does the city have more need than the county or how do we them in their contract?
The city, uh, the city has one animal control officer who he's an animal control officer and law enforcement is the way I'll say, he splits his time. They don't take in as many animals as we take in in a month's time. And the city manager's having the same concerns we're having. Like you were saying, there's not as many going out that was coming in. My suggestion is to them or why not have more adoption events? The city manager brought it up at our meeting that it's a long process, if you apply to adopt a dog, it, they really put them through a really stringent
It appears that the board, this shelter, their board has deemed that it's. It appears that the board, this shelter, their board has deemed that it's the in and outs are not matching. And because of that, they don't have, that's their choice. Unfortunately, that's their choice that they're making. But that forces us to make another choice, which means we cannot fund them if they're not doing what they agreed to. And if that's the primary means of them making money, I'm sorry, like they. Most county shelters are run, animals stay a certain period of time. If they are adoptable, they transition to another place. Or we, we get them out of the county shelter into a place that is adoptable. If they are, if they are not, they go through their quarantine. And then at that point, they euthanize because they're not adoptable. But if this Humane Society is not able to make those decisions, then we need to find some.
And I think they have asked for additional funding on top of what they were being funded before. And our question to the shelter manager was, okay, are you gonna build more kennels? You know, she was like, no, they needed that for the basics, the food and the basic stuff to maintain what they had.
So we gonna feed the dogs that aren't, that we not putting in?
If a dog, if the animals that go in don't orig- aren't originating from county capture or city capture, where are, where are the ones?
They can just surrender.
Just direct.
I don't know if they do this. You can, so you can transport dogs from other counties. Like let's say someone has a dog at another shelter and they think it's more adoptable here, then they can transition that. Humane Societies can pretty much do whatever they want to. They can take an owner, owner surrenders, they can. They're, they're not under any, if that board decides that's what they want to take, they can. They, we have no control over what they're taking. And that's the problem is that if they're taking in nice dogs and they don't want to euthanize them, but they don't. Maybe they're not very efficient at doing that, or they're not, they don't have a good relationship with other places, send them off to another place, then potentially they're keeping dogs for a long period of time. And that's in my, in my professional opinion, that's not good for the dog to be in that, obviously in the cage for that long, but it's also not good for what we need them to do.
We did collaborate with them and they held a rabies clinic at the Health Department on, uh, March sixteenth. And we had fifty pets that were vaccinated that day. It's our other health educator and she per county opioid collaboration. And I think she gets a lot of calls for, uh, for that, for resources for that. Strategic Plan Goal Five, Enhance Recruitment Efforts. Employee Engagement Succession Planning Initiatives That Contribute To Individual And Organization Effectiveness. As I stated before, we, the county was under a cyber incident. All our staff now have some form of computer access, whether it's a loaner computer or we've had eighteen of our original computers returned to us. However, they were returned and of course they had to be cleaned, um, or what they call cleaned. And we haven't got things added back yet. Like my clinical staff or the eighteen in environmental health and animal control that received their original computers back. But they don't have signature pads for the patients to sign, which is all kind of things that we're still missing there. Also, Microsoft Office, when our original computers were purchased, we had Microsoft Office. Which helps when we have reports from the state because when when we have to download the reports to and from the state, we need like Excel. It doesn't format the same way with Google Sheets. The county has, um, Google Suites is their choice. And so Microsoft Office, we, we were being told by the county manager that that's not an option for us. Because it's four hundred dollars per license. And when they wiped our computers clean, we lost the license that we had. So she's saying that we probably won't have Microsoft Office. I don't know what we're gonna do about that.
Does Tim run financials? Do you have Microsoft, uh, Excel?
That, they have allowed. Six licenses. But it's on VC three's loaned computers. So once we get our original computers back, we don't know if we're gonna have that or not.
Can they like transfer? Back like to the, to your computer they're gonna give you? Cause the license can go to. I guess I could, we can ask the commissioner if he can find out, if you know if it's on a VC three.
We are, we are, it's a constant conversation. It's an evolving issue. Um, Health Department is affected, but there are other departments as well and just trying to still figure out.
No, I was about to say if, if the license is.
All that we're trying to figure out with VC three. If they have ownership of it, can VC three ass- access it and give it back? Or do we have to start all over? So it's just kind of. Full access.
Yeah, that's what I.
So we're still dealing with, uh, computer issues. At the request of the county manager, the Process and Unit Supervisor position that was vacated by Ms. Deborah Rogers on February first has been reclassified to a Process and Assistant Four position. Which was approved by the Board of Commissioners on April the first. On April third, the county manager decided that she would freeze that position, although we reclassed it down to save money. Um, after much discussion with her, she has agreed to allow the Health Department to hire someone in that position part-time. With the understanding that it may increase to full-time, depending on the budget at a later time. Um, this is kind of putting us in a bind because like with this new Women's Health Grant. One of the three Process and Assistants I have up front that signs people in and out is gonna have to be out with these mobile clinics. So it's putting us even further short staff. We have three people up there. I would say at least once a week, somebody, one of those three is either out sick or on vacation. So then it limits how mu- how much staff I have in. And I end up having to pull people out of Tim's department that would normally be working on billing. To go up to some people in, some people out and do eligibility. Um, so then again, that puts employee morale at a, you know, very low. So that's affecting employee morale. The Health Department will be hosting the County Employee Wellness Day on May seventh and May twenty-second. Uh, the County Wellness Day is something that we have had every year as part of our insurance. In previous years, we haven't hosted it. It's been hosted by the county insurance company. But the county manager, uh, approached me about the Health Department hosting it this year so that we can build employees' insurance to get that revenue brought in. And we plan to offer our QR code that day when they come in to inquire what the interest would be in an employee clinic at the Health Department. So, uh, we're hoping that that would ease the burden on some of our employees if we were able to have an employee clinic at the Health Department. Where they could come on the clock. If you got a sinus infection, oh, my sinus is bothering me. Oh, I got an earache or whatever. That you could come on the clock and be seen by one of our providers. But we want to see what the employees' interest is in that. So all of that's gonna surround the County Wellness Days. Currently, we still have a Nutritionist Two position that's been posted for over a year. Is currently being filled by contract staff. And with talks with the county manager, she's frozen that position, which anything because that comes out of WIC funding. And WIC funds is federal money and it pays a hundred percent of that salary. So really freezing that position is not saving the county, but you know, we are making. Environmental Health Specialist has been posted. We've had a few applicants, but, um, we have decided to repost. Public Health Nurse Two, Enhance Role Nurse For Communicable Disease. It's been vacant since twenty twenty-three due to candidates declining salary offers. So it's posted again. She is allowing us to hire for that position. Um, we have a Public Health Nurse One position that will be vacant as of May third because we have an employee leaving. So the county manager has decided to freeze the Nurse One position, but hire for the Nurse Two position.
Ms. Amanda, you and I spoke briefly and I won't hold up any of your time, but just thinking about your uh, cost, financial situation with not being able to hire. There are options that you could possibly consider to fill those positions. Uh, if the county will allow in the form of, um, our community college and our uh, college, what else? St. Andrews, maybe even UNC Pembroke, uh, work study. You have students who qualify for it and they.
She's allowing us to do part-time person.
And the, why I'm saying that is that money would not come from your budget. It would be paid by adversity because that's federal money that they're getting. On behalf of that student to pay them, to assist with their tuition. And you could consider your health sciences, your human services, business administration, your medical office management students. Who, this would be an area that they would be interested in because their ultimate goal is to have a career in this field. So it wouldn't be really hard to train them as far as the knowledge that they would need to have it to apply to, to a good job.
I took the resources that you sent me and passed. So she's looking at that. But I have passed it on to her. The resources I gave you that Ms. Stephanie gave us were alternatives.
We will go next, you know, to new business. Is there any unfinished business? I don't think so. And, um, so we will go to.
I did want to ask, uh, we had talked about some grant money last time that wasn't gonna be spent. Was any opportunities found to kind of use that while we had it?
So that was gonna be our approval part down here for the approval of COVID funds for staff and seniors. I think Amanda had found some ways to use it, but I think that we only have five. Just present, so we cannot vote on the use of those funds right now.
But I will say that, uh, Tim and I, suggestions y'all gave us and um, we have ordered computers for the mobile unit. Laptops that'll go with the mobile unit, also tablets that can be used for surveys or that patient surveys. We ordered, Tim, what would you call that? Um, stand. Those three stands that we order for the mobile unit.
Other side. And so you can like put in, type in what you want it to say. Put up your ad.
They just came in Thursday. We can't vote on it, but we had, uh, me and Dr. Single Terry had talked about the staff that are going out in the communities on this mobile unit on the weekends. We can't increase their sal- COVID funds to purchase gifts that we could give them for that extra time, you know, we can't provide them with money and a bump in their salary because we just can't say that. That's a county thing. But if we have COVID money and you're going out giving immunizations in the mobile unit. Why couldn't we give them a hundred dollar gift card for spending a Saturday out there giving immunization? So that's what that was.
This is from the COVID money though. I think we have to use by May thirty-first. And so we were trying to get it, um, but that's what we had, cause I was like, we can't pay the nurses. Cause you asking them to come on a Saturday or on my off time and you can't pay them. So we, we needed to find a way that we can make it an incentive so that they can wanna sign up to go work on the mobile unit. And so, um, we were thinking if we go ahead and buy the gift cards before for when the mobile unit is booked, because it's already getting booked up now. So we need to have the people ready to go. So we were trying to say that was a way to use it. Yeah, anybody that works, anybody that works the mobile unit on the weekend. Oh, well, you make us feel better. Yeah, me and Ian was over here like, we gotta figure out.
Four gift, uh, pop money, four gift. Addendums, only two is going away. December of this year. When is it? December of next year or May? It's May.
Yeah, COVID vaccine, yeah.
And every one of those four that we were talking about allows for staff incentives or staff salary to come out of that. So we would be good with the gift cards.
With the incentive. Alright, but now me and E, me, me and, uh, me and Mr. Yancy are feeling better now, cause we were like, I was really like, how we gonna get this started first? Alright, so now we, now that we, we got that all settled, we, we won't even have to do that part on three and four, we won't be able to do because we don't have a quorum. So, um, we can go, uh, to the department focus, which was the maternal and child health. Five-minute limit.
And the child fatality.
And for the child fatality report.
Okay, well, good evening. I'm gonna go through this as quickly as I can. I didn't realize I had a five-minute limit, so I'm gonna speed through this. So I, I think I'm, some of you are familiar with me, but I, I know two of you are new, so. I'm Carlotta Rivers and I am the Maternal Health Coordinator with Scotland County Health Department. Um, the maternal health program at the Health Department has been providing prenatal care to the women and families of, um, this community and surrounding area since nineteen forty-three. And of course, we strive to provide personalized comprehensive prenatal care to all of our patients. The primary mission of our program is to ensure that all individuals who are pregnant and low income have access to early and continuous prenatal and postpartum care. Our Health Department received funding from Healthy Mothers, Healthy Children Block Grant Fund to, um, provide ins- um, multiple things such as incentives for some of our programs. We provide a certain. We provide a certain amount of funding for patients who do not qualify for Medicaid to cover their prenatal care. For example, if we have a undocumented patient, they don't qualify for Medicaid. So we use some of that funding to cover their prenatal care and not just within our agency, but also outside of our agency for things such as ultrasounds and other antenatal testing that may be done at the hospital. Our agreement addenda is basically what, what the law is for us when it comes to our program. It lets us know what we do, screenings, counseling, referrals for psychosocial and nutrition count conditions and problems, behavioral health assessments, and also our wraparound services such as providing referrals for care management for high-risk pregnancies. And so I'll also now go into some of the details of my position as the maternal health coordinator. So I'm responsible for the maternal health AA, completing it, submitting it. Part of the AA is in an open windows budget, which is in Word. It's kind of difficult to look at it when you can't access it. Our budget is responsible for our budgeting expenditures. We have to follow the county process with securing purchase orders, ordering items, receiving and storing, and issuing them, logging them as well, and also completing workshop and overnight forums for conferences and workshops. I'm responsible for writing and updating policies and standing orders annually and as needed. They may be categorized and formatted so that staff has the availability to review them as needed. We order tests per standing orders and per the providers. We receive those test results and document them in the appropriate places in the electronic health record, which is known as C R M D. And we also follow up with interventions. We provide assistance with the public health nurse clinical staff as needed, such as providing guidance and answering questions because maternity often, I mean, you may get a contracted addendum before the year something has changed and we need to be able to communicate that to our staff, to our nurses, lab, et cetera, so that they are aware of what's going on. Also, we participate in monthly chart reviews with our providers. We have a family nurse practitioner and a physician assistant. And our supervising OP physician is contracted through Scott Memorial Hospital and that is Dr. Exita Patel. A small portion of my salary comes from being available to consult with our care management for high-risk pregnancy program. Our social work supervisor inputs the OB risk screenings that are done on all prenatal women. Particularly, the program is Medicaid-focused. And the, the handwriting may be a little difficult to read, so I'll come in with my, my nursing ability to read difficult handwriting and I'll go over those clarified information with her. We participate in internal maternal health chart audits and participate in the state women's health audit, which is held and our next one is due next year in twenty twenty-five. We participate in collaborative partnerships with community agencies and facilities. For example, we partner with Scott Memorial Hospital Women's Unit on the annual pregnancy fair, which is upcoming next month on May twenty-third. And additionally, I have been a maternal health enhanced role nurse since two thousand and eight. So basically, that's where I have received specialized training, educational course through UNC Chapel Hill. And it allows me to be able to do some extended things that the average public health nurse can't do when it comes to providing care to a pregnant woman. And that would be things such as obtaining fetal heart rates and frontal heights and assessing things. And there's some that I can do based on standing orders. So we pride ourselves in the quality of care we provide. Our patients come in, they start initially with pregnancy testing, and then if they choose to come to us or if they're eligible to come to our clinic, which is low to moderate risk, then they begin that initial care for four weeks until they're twenty-eight weeks. From twenty-eight weeks to thirty-five, thirty-six weeks, they're seen every two weeks. And then from the thirty-fifth, thirty-six weeks until the end of the pregnancy, they're seen weekly. And after they deliver, and then we try to make sure those patients are routed back in through the family planning clinic so that they can get their postpartum visit done. And the reason why we don't do our postpartum visits through our maternal health clinic is because if those patients are going to be receiving contraceptive, they have to be able to be admitted into our family planning clinic in order to receive those contraceptives from our pharmacy. Also, I would just like to say that our greatest accomplishment is knowing that we have touched the lives of our patients and have helped to ensure safe passage of mother and baby into a new life together because that, that's a big event and we want to do our best to make sure that they have good comprehensive care. So I'm gonna move on to the child health focus and I'm gonna be even more brief with that because the services that we provide with our child. So we contract with them to provide well-child visits and we use pass-through funds for dental services, which was contracted with the Richmond County Dental Clinic. And Amanda worked on getting that secured because it was difficult for us to find a dentist to work with this year. In twenty twenty-two, we had Dr. Watson. But the Richmond County Dental Personnel, they were willing to contract with us to have this service available. Now, the service hasn't been utilized that much because these funds are for patients and families of children who are underinsured or uninsured. We've marketed, we've advertised, we've put it in the paper, it's on our website. But there's a very small percentage belonging to families that are non-insured. So it's about five percent according to sources. So we also provide sickle cell testing and counseling, lead screening, and one of our programs that we've been able to restart after twenty twelve. It's been a long time since we've been able to get a nurse here long enough to be able to get trained to do this program. And that is our postpartum newborn home visiting program. So I'm gonna ask Joy Hocken, who is the registered nurse, who performs that service to come up and share briefly about that program.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Joy Hocken. I've been with the health department for eighteen months now. I did mother newborn, milk their baby for thirteen years in the hospital. So I do have experience with the mothers, the postpartum care. The postpartum newborn home visiting service that I have restarted is where myself register nurse, I go out to the home. And it's to deliver social support and educational services directly to families in their homes. This include, but is not limited to assessment, counseling, teaching, and referral to other services providers for reaching families early with preventive services and anticipatory guidance. And also to provide opportunities for the timely referral of problems before they become irreversible or costly. To promote spacing of subsequent pregnancies by allowing timely discussion of contraception needs and linkage with women's preventive health services and to provide a link with children's preventive services. And the rationale for this is, this system is to be effective in reducing infant mortality and morbidity and providing a mechanism for early referral to preventative services. This service is eligible to Scotland County residents who receive Medicaid. Any questions?
Okay, so I'm also gonna come back and I'm going to present to you the twenty twenty-four Scotland County Annual Child Fatality Report. I know you guys have received some papers, but I'm just gonna go through my PowerPoint slides, make this brief. The Scotland County Child Fatality Prevention Team, it is a multidisciplinary team. So if you're, if you want to flip through your slides, then you can see that we have several team members who are from the health department. They are from services. They are from community agencies such as the Scotland County Domestic Violence and Rape Crisis Center, the school system, going to Ed Lighton, the district justice. So we, we have these different wanted to have members from different disciplines who may have had interactions with the family members of the cases that we review to bring the knowledge and experiences that they have on those cases so that we can discuss the cases in detail. So review of our duties. Scotland County's team, we meet five times per year to discuss and review these fatalities to review the details of them. And these cases are from ages zero to seventeen years of age. So even if a child passes away and it's not due to abuse or neglect and they are seventeen years and three hundred and sixty-four days, we're gonna review that case. The case review forms are completed by myself and Joy is the co-chair as well. And the review coordinator, who is Ms. Christine here, and when they are completed electronically, they are sent to the state CFPT coordinator, who is Ms. Carrie Young electronically. During each local meeting, after we review these details, what we're looking for, we're looking to see if there are any system problems or gaps in services that can be identified that we can actually do something about to make an impact on the prevention of future deaths. If these recommendations are made and we, we come up with a way to actually so I'll give you an example. So if you have a, a child who passes away and the death is ruled as due to co-sleeping, we look at the details of that case and if did the mom start prenatal care early? Did she have a safe sleep area for the child? We look at those different things to say, okay, well, was there something missed? Was there something that she could have had? Did she have a safe sleep area? You know, things like that. And then we make our recommendations based on the details of what we find. And we work as a blended team. We are a child fatality prevention team, but we also work together with the community child protection team out of DSS. So in twenty twenty-three, and I'll explain this. We, in twenty twenty-three, it runs on a calendar year from January to December. But the cases that we review are a year prior. Now, due to COVID and that, that was another fiasco that kind of put us reviewing some cases late. So in twenty twenty-three, we reviewed a total of ten cases, but three were from twenty twenty-one. So just due to COVID and everything that happened with that, there was a delay in getting the information. And then we reviewed seven cases that occurred in twenty-two. So just briefly, the causes of death in twenty twenty-one, there was one from extreme prematurity. One was deemed to be unknown. And then one from leukemia. In twenty twenty-two, the reasons are Potter Syndrome, unknown slash birth defects, viral pneumonia, hyperthermia, which results in a hot car death, drowning, also homicide. I would also like to say that we, there were two cases that we reviewed. Now, we are supposed to review children who are residents of Scotland County. They sent us information for these deaths. One occurred, this child's residence was actually out of state, but the death occurred in this county. So we, we continue to review the case and then one occurred out of county. The child was a resident of Scotland County, but the death occurred. It did not occur here. And recommended based on our case reviews, we didn't find any new recommendations, but some of the things that the team has done in the past with our health campaigns, we just opted to continue. And that would be safe sleep areas, promotion of that, and also a focus on discussing impaired versus impaired sleep by the caregiver. Also to continue safety tips for parents and caregivers to avoid hot car deaths and also the importance of water swimming safety for parents, caregivers, and adults. And occur here and for the case where the child not resident here. So moving on to our activities and accomplishments, we worked as a blended team. We met our five times a year. We did not have a CFPT subcommittee for twenty twenty-three. Bigger counties that have more cases to review, they use a subcommittee. They just can't, usually we meet during lunch and those counties can't review all those cases during that time limit. So they'll have a subcommittee to review additional cases. We don't review that many cases, so we have used our CFPT subcommittee in the past for our health promotional campaigns and meetings to have those activities. Complete our annual activity summary and it was sent to the CFPT state coordinator by the date of March tenth of twenty-three. Our individual reports were completed by myself. At the time, we had an interim review coordinator who has since retired from the health department. And we transitioned over to our review coordinator presently now, Ms. Christine. And we have to review these reports to the Board of Health and also the Board of County Commissioners on an annual basis, and that was completed. I co-presented to the Board of County Commissioners with Ms. April Sneed six, when she was still the DSS director. And myself and Joy, we attended the North Carolina Child Fatality Prevention Summit. And their thing was continuing to collaborate, learn, and take action for our children's future. That was held on March thirtieth of twenty-three at the Friday Center in Chapel Hill. And there is one piece of communication that I want to make sure that you guys hear. So basically, the child fatality prevention team is getting ready to undergo overhaul statewide. And the reason being is that our statewide prevention system needs to be restructured and optimize the work of the teams and to ensure that information learned from reviews is effectively used at the state and local level to prevent future child deaths and strengthen child well-being. North Carolina is only one of two states not using the National Fatality Review Case Reporting System. And this system is free system that's designed for states to collect and report aggregate information learned from child death reviews. So if this is put into place, then use of this national data system would dramatically increase our ability to understand child's deaths, but we the child fatality prevention system to eliminate national reviews and provide sufficient state-level support for local teams to ensure effective use of the national data system. And that's as much information as they could give us at this time. We don't know what that's gonna look like during that summit. We asked questions. You know, is this gonna be more? They did say that instead of two or three-page paper that we do now, it may be a twenty-page paper per review. So we don't know if this is gonna be a position that's, it's gonna require a full-time person versus, you know, like Joy and I, you know, it's not our main job, but it's a part of our job. That will be forthcoming information shared with us in the future. And additional activities, basically, Carrie Young, who is our state CFPT coordinator, she completed a site visit on August sixteenth of twenty-three, and this is the first one that has And this is the first one that has been done in eight years. The last one was done in January of twenty fifteen. And I also included her site visit letter in your packets. And she was complimentary of our team and how we function during those meetings. We were following our protocols. We also made sure that things, you know, we made it known that the teams understand that that information shared during the meetings is confidential. And we had some additional members who participated in a DSS intensive review. And we had also a webinar that was sponsored by the Injury Violence Prevention Branch. And that was last August, and Joy participated in that. And basically, they share information and data from the violent death reporting system. We participated in open forums and during the October to say thank you, thank you, thank you to our the interim review coordinator, Ms. Deborah Rogers, who retired effective February first. She was the management support supervisor at the health department. And it was imperative that we give her something from the team because that was already, you know, you already have a full plate when it comes to job responsibilities. And then the person who used to do that position left. And then the person who was supposed to be coming in took another position with county. So Ms. Deb already had a full plate, and it's like you've got a full plate of food. And then you have someone who just keeps heaping food on top of it. So, but she did it. She is a loyal, dedicated worker, and she did it. And just like everything else she did, she gave it her all. And we had to say appreciation to her for her and her work. And as usual, with every meeting, we promote all of the events that the different disciplines and their agencies bring to the meeting because we want to share those activities. You know, it's nothing like having an event and then people say, well, we didn't know about it. So we give each member time to share the things that are going on in the agencies that they feel like we can spread within our each individual community so that people are patients and even staff members so that they can things being the Scotland Parks and Brakes Easter Extravaganza, our Adolescent Wellness Council's Teen Easter Egg Hunt. And some of those were held on April first of last year. Scotland Memorial Hospital's Pregnancy Fair on June first, and the Laura Hill Recreation Center's Teen Fest back in September. So also, we have some Scotland County versus North Carolina infant mortality rates. The latest rate we have available for Scotland County is in twenty twenty-two, and that is based on the North Carolina State Center for Health Statistics. It went down slightly. In twenty twenty-one, it was ten, and in twenty twenty-two, it was eight. And I did a comparison to North Carolina. The North Carolina rate averages for infant mortality at six point eight. But we're, we're a little higher than the rate. And then I also did a comparison with Richmond County. We had a former chair who asked on how, how did we do it in comparison to a county similar to us? So I began to do a comparison to Richmond County, and our rates are slightly lower than theirs. But it's a county that's pretty similar to us in population and composition. So there's always work, you know, anytime you have deaths, there are work that we can do. But we pretty much work very well in Scotland County because we collaborate amongst each other. We echo those same health messages with safe sleep and gun safety and things of that nature. But and also, I want to go back and and complete my rationales for the deaths with the homicide. We are seeing an increase in that. I think for the past two years, we have had deaths by homicide, by firearm discharge. So that's my report. And are there any questions?
Are they accidental deaths or intentional?
Excuse me?
Are they firearms? Are they accidental or are they intentional?
They homicide.
Oh, okay, got you. They didn't shoot themselves. Okay.
We haven't had any teen suicides here.
Not last year. Or a year before. I think it's probably two or three years ago since we've had questionable.
Yeah, I know. I've had, I've had some in practice with patients in the last year.
Year, okay.
Yeah, so, but they weren't here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we thank you. And forgive me that I didn't count past six. You know, I do know how to count to ten. We do have six members present, so we can vote on the phones and everything for you. So y'all can move forward with those.
Does the child fatality report need to be approved?
Oh, do we need to approve which one? That was my phone. So again, we had talked earlier, so we needed to see if the board wanted to approve the use of the COVID funds through December and May to use for staff incentives for the mobile unit. Any discussion on it? I'd like our motion for the approval of COVID funds for staff incentives. And we get a count, so all those improve, all those in favor of approval for the COVID funds for staff incentives? Say ah, opposed. All right, we have passed the approval for COVID funds for staff incentives. Moving forward, we have a new additional funding to approve. One woman's health grant for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which Amanda spoke on in her presentation that will be for the two health workers and additional. And then that ARPA Public Health Services grant. Motion.
Approval.
Yeah, second.
Thank you. Oh, it was motion made by Commissioner Gibson and second by. So all those in favor of approval for the Women's Health Grant and the ARPA Public say ah. Oppose. All right, so.
I should have asked this before I voted. The Women's Health Grant is for three years. What about the ARPA?
The ARPA Public Health Services, the fifty thousand. There was money left with the state ARPA money, so they have divided it up for every county. Um, it's fifty thousand for this fiscal year that we're in now. And then we're going to get another fifty thousand after July.
Okay, so twice. Okay.
So we have approval for the Women's Health Grant, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That'll be for three years. And the ARPA Public Health Services for our fiscal year. Twenty-three and twenty-four? Oh, twenty-four and twenty-five. It will be the fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five. Anybody have any additional points they want to discuss, anything else? All right, so meeting is during the eight twenty-six.